Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order at this time, a meeting of the Durant City Council here on March the 11th of 2025. If you would, please, join me in invocation and salute to our flag. If you would please stand. Let's pray together. Our God, our Father in heaven, we're so thankful for the blessings of today. What a beautiful day this is, beautiful weather. The blessing that we have of living in this town of Durant. We just pray for everyone who is here representing the citizens. Everyone is here working for the city to make this a better place to live. Pray that you would bless them. The work that they do for us and for our community. Pray for their families as well, that you would bless them. Thank you, Lord, that we live in the country that we do. We experience the freedoms and the liberties that you have allowed us, that you've given us, and we pray that that continues. Pray that everything we do here tonight will bring glory and honor to your name. All these things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. If you would, please join me in a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Shear?
Here.
Councilmember Fuller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Here.
Mayor Tucker?
Here. We have a quorum. Everyone's present. First order of business, or before that, is a presentation that I will make. On behalf of the city, I want to make a proclamation declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Durant, and the proclamation reads, whereas the city of Durant decrees that all citizens affirm to follow the concepts, practices, and intent embodied by the laws of the United States of America and the state of Oklahoma and the city of Durant in regard to fair housing. And whereas the city of Durant has designated the month of April annually as Fair Housing Month and encourages each citizen to implement the provisions of those acts. And whereas the mayor of the city of Durant designates city planning director as the Fair Housing Activities Coordinator and requests that any person or group of persons planning activities to promote fair housing to inform the Fair Housing Activities Coordinators of such activities. And whereas it is the desire of the city of Durant to recognize those persons or groups who best create an awareness of the need for fair housing practices or otherwise promotes fair housing practices. Now, therefore, I, Martin Tucker, the mayor of the city of Durant, do hereby declare and proclaim the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. Now, first order of business, under the order of businesses, is the consent agenda. There are five items under the consent agenda, including regular meeting minutes from February 11th, special meeting minutes from February the 14th. We have budget supplements. We have a mayoral recommendation of Cindy Rule for the Ron Cross Senior Activities Advisory Board, and we have an agreement to consider approval of with Air Med Care, the network group. Are there any items that the council wishes to have removed for specific consideration, separate from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. There was nothing removed, so there is no item number two. Item number three will be Ms. Ann Shin. Welcome back. Will come up and present for us the January 25 financial reports and the February 25 sales tax reports.
Good evening. The first one, first report is our general fund report. This is for the January, so the year-to-date is supposed to be fifty-eight point thirty-three percent. And the year-to-date, the total revenue without the fund balance is six percent over our budget. And then, including the fund balance, is about four percent under the budget. And for the expenditure is about six point two five under the budget. You can tell that our department, the total spending is about fifty-two percent. And year-to-date is supposed to be the fifty-eight percent, so which means under budget for six percent. And you will see that the January, this period, the bottom line, that net gain and loss is negative five hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and nineteen. That's because the January, we had three payroll. We had three payroll payout. And the year-to-date is about four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-two. Is there any question about this? Okay. The second report is the capital improvement. This is just for your information. And the third one is our utility authority report. This is also the January, and then it's supposed to be fifty-eight point thirty-three percent. And you can tell the revenue is about fifty-six ninety-six percent. So if we, based on the fifty-eight percent, our revenue is supposed to be the eight million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand. So it's about two hundred and eleven thousand short. But the good news is our department, they spend, you can tell that they spend about forty-four percent. So it's under ten percent, ten point eight percent. So that's make our year-to-date is one point four million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, three oh seven. And the third one is our sales tax breakdown. The highlight red is for CD, for us to use, is one percent, two percent, and half cents. And then the next page, next report is ten years, one percent, sales tax revenue. And the month of the February, you will see that it's four hundred and nine thousand, six thirty-six. Compared to the prior year, the same period is negative two point two nine percent. It's about ninety-six hundred less. But even we see the several, you know, negative number, but our current revenue is still, how to say that, within our budget. Because when we budget, it's really conservative. So that's still, we still, how to say that, under track for the revenue. And the last one is monthly average for our sales tax. And you can tell, compared to twenty-four, twenty-five, is four hundred and twenty thousand, seven eighty-six. And the prior year is four hundred and sixteen thousand, eight twenty-four. So it's about thirty-nine hundred higher than compared to the prior year. And this is compared within the trauma. So it's part of it, it's the last year and it's part of this year. Any questions?
Questions for Ann on those reports? Very good. I was remiss earlier. I failed to mention that our city manager, Pam Polk, is not here tonight. She's actually in Washington DC, representing the city at the National League of Cities. And I gather she was at the, I don't know if she's on television, but the vice president was there last night speaking to that crowd, so I'm wondering if she got an autograph or not. We'll find out when she gets home, I'm sure. Next in our agenda is the administration items, which is items four. The first one is item four A, consider approval of a resolution establishing fees and costs charged by the city of Durant and the Durant City Utilities Authority for Durant Services, which is R 2025 dash O one. Now, who's going to speak on this one? Ryan?
Good evening, council. So I try to do this once a year, just look at the fees, the current fees, and evaluate from where we are and what we need to improve on, fee-wise. For the most part, this one kind of just cleans up the whole thing, since Parks and Rec is five departments. Me having to go through five different fee schedules to make things make sense, where it goes in multiple departments. I just combined it and made a new category for Parks and Rec. That's where I have my permits to allow vendors for special events, like the sports festival coming up. Sponsorships, I redid the sponsorships, lowered them to hopefully get more people involved, so we can have more activities and get more stuff, more programs involved. Cancellation. I put these on there, on the fee schedule, because until this moment, there's nothing on paper that says what happens if someone cancels a field rental or anything. So just getting this on paper. Then you have your recreation, pretty much what that is, is everything that involves rec throughout the city. So the actual rec league fees for third-party, that doesn't change. But if we wanted to do a day fee, so if someone comes in and just wants to play soft, adult softball for one game, we now have a fee for it instead of them paying for the entire season. They do that, and they can pay one game individual, or for a season fee, raising that up. Because our adults are taking adult softball way too seriously, and we're actually fighting over calls. So now I have to get higher officials to manage that. So I told them if they do, if they cause a lot of ruckus, it's going to increase the fees. Then we're trying to do a golf tournament here for the sports festival. I put that in on the recreation. That's just pretty much cost of what it's going to take to run this.
Where is that golf tournament going to be?
It's going to be at Chick's Hall Point.
Okay.
But the golf tournament, yes, it's not in Durant, but it is a recreation activity that we are trying to, I would love to make the Echo Park back into a golf course in the future. But for now, this is a good way to get sponsors for the festival as well. So that's really where the golf tournament comes into play. Facility rental, making where parks has a daily deposit, and for all the daily rentals of the facilities, so pavilions, ball fields, anything within the city parks, have one flat fee of a hundred dollars for an all-day rental. And that covers my cost for labor to go out and clean trash, bathrooms, all that stuff. Camping fees, with us redoing the RV pads, we will now be at the same level as all the VIP spots in Texoma. So if we bump our fees up to thirty-five dollars, it covers our cost for the park itself, plus a little revenue to keep making improvements. What I also did was instead of making it where you stay for seven days, you get a discount, and then if you, but if you stay for eight, you have to pay a weekly and then a daily. It's going to be just daily broken out. So depending on how long you stay, there'll be a longevity break, five dollars off or ten dollars off from the daily fee. City employee discounts. So I, in previous cities, I've had multiple cities give discounts to employees. And most of that stuff is through recreation, because since we are the department that is all about healthy, health and wellness, we're trying to get more people out there. So having, giving free, or half-off rentals at the lake. So, and then our boat passes, giving one free boat pass to get people out there. Also have, and the pool, families can get, you can get a family membership for free. But if you go, if you have more people than four, you have to pay for the additional. So we still offer it, but it'll be a credible discount. Also with the pool increasing the membership from three to four, since the average family size has now increased. Include that, and it still covers our cost for most of our stuff. And then there's much of, that's it in a nutshell.
Any questions of Ryan? Ryan, I appreciate you spending some time working on this. It seems like you've lowered as many costs as you've increased.
I did try to lower as many as possible, or offer low, or lower costs, like my pool memberships. I added that, so we get a lot of questions at the pool for people that just want to, grandparents that have their kids for the weekend. They want to buy a pass to come every day or for a three-day weekend. Now we are offering a pass for that. It'll be pretty much, if a three-day pass, you get, you know, you pay for two admissions. You have your month pass, so people that are in town for a month or a little bit longer, they can buy a pass for a specific month. Also, pool parties, trying to make it where, most of our pool parties, they book it for the entire thing, and they can have as many people as they want. But for the most part, they barely get to the sixty level. We're offering a option to have a lower pool party, but you have to share the pool with another pool party. So we'd be in two separate areas and lower that cost, and the cost is fifty dollars less. But that also covers the cost of the additional lifeguard that we would have to have for one or two parties at once.
Would you define beverage garden for me?
Huh?
Would you define a beverage garden for me?
So that's the beer beverage, so Lost Street, every year for past couple of years, they've done a beer garden at the rugby tournament at the complex. Well, they've been getting the permit through the city, but at Parks and Rec, I don't get any of that revenue. So having it where, if they're only doing it on a city park, having the revenue come to, be directed towards parks is the goal here.
This fee, why is it five times higher? And also, is this a daily fee, a three-day pass, or annual fee? It's two hundred and fifty dollars. Why is it five times higher than the food truck fee?
For the beverage garden, it's a one-time permit, I believe. I am taking literally what's already being used for a different, under the city permits, and using it for parks. Just, this just helps direct the funds to go to parks. They would have the same rules and regulations, it's just the funds will go to.
So the city's charging two hundred and fifty dollars for this, then you're going to charge us two hundred and fifty dollars?
If they are just doing it for a one-time deal, and it is for an event that's on parks grounds, it's not one or the, you have to get both. It's, you're getting it with the city, but the funds get directed to, it's just where, ends up where the funds go. This is the goal of that. Does that make sense?
Not really.
So right now, if Lost Street, for example, they get the permit through the city, and the city, it goes into general fund. But if they're hosting or running their beer garden on city grant, on park grounds, I see none of that, those vendor fees. It goes to general funds, and I don't see it. This helps direct it. They still will buy it, and they will, it'll still be the same legal, but it just directs the same fee or same funds to parks. And it, instead of going to general fund and getting split up amongst all the departments.
You said this is a one-time thing. Is that good for a weekend, or is it just good for one day?
One, a day, one-day event. You're not buying a beer garden for an entire weekend. It is only, and with this, it's only through my approval that they can even have the beer garden. So they, I have to have some kind of event that's going on, like the sports festival that's already going to have that. But they can't buy a beer garden for, like if they are having a youth baseball tournament. I'm not allowing that. But adult rugby tournament, that's where.
How long is a rugby tournament?
Huh?
How long is a rugby tournament? Two days?
This year, it's a one, for the sports festival, it's one day. But I believe we're in the running to get the national sevens and national elevens, I believe, tournament. That will be a two to three-day tournament later down the road.
So why don't you have a three-day permit on there too?
Right now, I'm just doing one day at a time and seeing how it goes. Because I don't want beer gardens in every single event. Because we are, like I said, trying to show wellness and.
Is that why it's five times higher than a food truck?
Yep. It's just like with my concession stands. I charge more for soda than I do for water or juice, because we're trying to encourage healthy choices.
Any other comments, questions for Ryan?
Good old sin taxes. We can charge, good old sin taxes. We can up the sin tax, can't we?
Yeah.
Ryan, I appreciate you, the work you're doing on that schedule. Thank you, sir. No comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve four A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four A. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next is item four B, which is discussion, consideration, and possible action to consider adoption of the 2025 Citizen Participation Plan, which is required for all community development block grant applications and closeout process for those CDBG-funded projects.
Good evening. Just kind of what he said, an annual approved citizen participation plan is required to maintain our CDBG eligibility. And in this citizen participation plan, it just kind of outlines required activities to meet those eligibility requirements, including public hearings, so that we can inform and engage citizens on proposed and then approved CDBG application slash funded projects.
Does this differ from years past?
Nope.
Okay.
The only thing that's changed is the year.
Year, yeah. So we've done this for several years in a row now. The CDBG's not a new program. It's been around for years and years and years. And this is one of their requirements, and always has been.
I went back and I found one all the way back to 2016.
Yeah.
So we've been doing it for that, that long, and it's been that requirement for the community development block grant applications and quote-unquote.
Right. Comments or questions? No comments? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve four B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four B. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Next is item four C, which is consider approval of a right-of-way lease agreement between the city of Durant and Dobson Technologies Transport and Telecom Solutions LLC.
Good evening, council. This is basically a franchise agreement with Dobson. We've updated it.
Say, didn't we do this last year, Philip?
Yeah, but we've made some changes to this one, and we've raised the price on them a little bit and made some provisions. Told them how deep they could go with their fiber and everything. It's, Tom, you looked over it, and it's pretty, pretty cut and dry.
How well did they perform as far as cutting up pavement and putting in fiber? Was that okay or not okay?
They hit some lines when they were in town. A lot of them wasn't marked, though.
Right.
I mean, we have some sore lines. It's hard to find. But, and they fixed them all, in general, most of them.
Mostly?
Yeah.
Some of them?
Yeah. Some, well, most of them, really, because I stayed on them until they did.
Okay.
But anyway, that's basically what this is, is just a new agreement with them.
Gotcha. Okay.
Are they done laying fiber? Are we still doing it?
Dobson still has a few projects going on. Three sixty is doing some on the northern part of the town, up around, well, up Mockingbird.
I was going to say, somebody's at Mockingbird. I don't know who it is.
That was Three sixty, up there.
I ain't gotten as many complaints, so I assume that some of the work's been finished over the, since.
Dobson, yeah. There was a lot of complaints, yes.
So I was just kind of.
They were, they were staying, they were staying in the utility right-of-ways, and so.
Okay. I was just curious how that was going.
Yeah. We've had some complaints about Three sixty, too, but you're going to have all those, so.
Comments or questions on this?
And this won't be for ten years.
Ten-year agreement? Gotcha. No comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve four C. Couldn't remember what it was.
Enthusiastic about it, too, by the way.
Motion to approve four C.
That's better. Yeah, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four C. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes. Next is item four D, which is to consider bid of award for the Durant Police Department Fleet Maintenance and Repair. And then we'll also consider a service agreement pursuant to the bid award. And then we'll also consider a service agreement pursuant to the bid award. Chief Petty.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. So this is a competitive bill to help maintain our aging patrol vehicle fleet. So again, this is a competitive bid that was sent out, there was two of the lowest. Uh, the one that the suggestion would lean towards is the five-dollar difference of labor. But with that, because of the advantage of the scope of the overall work capabilities, the faster turnaround time, because we're getting them picked up and delivered back to us in some instances, less than twenty-four hours, which obviously gives us operability in the field to have our patrol cars seen and out there serving the citizens rather than sitting. Uh, logistically, it was more efficient and really a direct asset for access to discounted GM parts at a ten percent discount over cost.
Comments or questions on the bids, did everyone get a chance to see the bid, uh, the summation of the bid packet? We didn't see the bid packet. Questions for Chief Petty?
We've had good experiences with these guys, you said, how long have we been using them?
Probably three months now.
Okay.
And you said they pick up and deliver?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we, we've actually had instances where a, a night shift officer could park his vehicle, go home, get his rest, turn around and sleep, and be operational the next day.
And they're not charging for the pickup?
No, sir. Uh, they actually, uh, detail the vehicle when it's delivered as well.
Very good. Comments or questions? Humphrey's mulling one around, I can tell.
I just like to keep my money in Durant, as the can butt.
Yeah, that's.
Forty dollars an hour difference is a, God.
Yeah, we did send it out locally and there was quite a difference.
Right, yes. I think all of our preference is to do business locally when we can, right?
Yep.
Okay, no more comments or questions, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve item four D-A.
Four, four D-A. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four D-A, which is the bid award, will the clerk please call the roll?
Um, ma'am, uh, please put on record, please, you want that bid award to.
Oh, according to the record, the, the award will go to, uh, Classic of Texoma, which is eight ninety-nine South Highway seventy-five in Denton, Texas. Am I correct, chief?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. That was the selection, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, next is item four D-B, which is to consider approval of a service agreement pursuant to the bid award to Classic of Texoma. And, uh, Tom, have you had a chance to review that on behalf of the city?
I have, I don't believe it's in the packet, but I have, uh, have reviewed a draft of the, uh, service agreement. It's relatively straightforward, uh, outlines the terms in the bid itself. Uh, my recommendation would be for the council to approve, uh, the service agreement terms pursuant to the bid and allow the city manager to execute that.
Comments or questions of the city attorney on the, uh, service agreement? Hearing none, then I would make a motion that we approve item four D-B, which is approval of the service agreement pursuant to the bid award.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four D-B, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, that concludes all the administration items for tonight's agenda for the city council. Next is public hearings. And tonight we have a public hearing, uh, and it's five A on the agenda. Consideration and possible approval of a final replat for property located between Larkspur Lane and Little John Drive in Durant, more particularly described as a very, very long meets and bounds description. I won't read, uh, to you. So this is also known as North Ridge Two?
Heritage North Phase Two, yeah.
Phase Two, okay.
Yeah, and this is just the final forty-nine lots of the internal part of the, the neighborhood. It's just to finish out from the first and, or first phase of the project and get this, uh, straight away so he can get all the houses completed and get them sewed, so. I think this one is pretty, pretty cut and dry on what we're seeking. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions that y'all may have. Correct.
So, so my question was, and it's not on here, uh, and I have asked, but the, the, the stormwater detention is not here. Is it, is it adjacent, it's adjacent to this subdivision? There has to be some.
Yeah.
Buddy did.
Yeah, there's some four and a half acres of stormwater retention possibly put in.
Okay.
Phase one.
Okay, and so that's owned by, that's, that's owned by Sunstar as well, the same owners, right?
And, yeah, city-owned part of it.
Okay, okay, alright, cause that's, you know, obviously, uh, critical to this.
Correct.
And then here in the southeast corner, this outlot C is kind of a puzzle to me as well.
Yeah, I figured there'd be some questions on that.
Cause that's someone else's driveway.
Um, her driveway, she got a legal, existing legal easement that went through there prior to Buddy purchasing in this darkness. That's gonna be, they're, they've got a deal worked out.
Yeah, but he may, he wanted to make it an outlot so that once it goes to her, she can't build a house on it. Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Yeah, you don't wanna build a house in someone else's driveway, right?
Correct.
Okay. So this, since this is a public hearing, I guess at some point, I haven't been instructed on this, but at some point, we're gonna hear from the public if there are comments to be heard. I understand there were no letters or phone calls that were turned in on this.
No, no.
Uh, but at a public hearing, I gather I'm supposed to ask for comments. Uh, so, does anyone have any comments in regard to this replat on this property? Heritage North Phase Two. So calling for comments once. Calling for comments twice, no, no one wants to comment on this? The final time I will call for public comments at this time? Okay, having done that, the public comment, the public hearing portion of this is closed and now we'll consider the, uh, final replat. Any other comments or questions of staff on this project?
I guess I'm curious why we've got just the housing for the northern half, but the replats for the whole.
It actually, the replat shouldn't have been, this is just the final plaque. Um, cause the, the entire other part of the neighborhood's complete, this is, yeah, this is just that final forty-nine that was part of that. It was actually the city that originally went to Buddy and asked him to break this up into two phases due to the construction on University at the time.
It's limited in the package, it's the whole thing, so I wanted to clarify that it's just that northern.
Yeah, yeah.
Further comments or questions? Those are good ones. Hearing none, then I'll make a motion that we approve item five A, tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item five A, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, thank you very much. At, at this time, I wanna pause the city council meeting and, uh, go through the part that the vice mayor likes so much. At this time, I will call to order, uh, a meeting of the Durant Airport Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Shear?
Here.
Trustee Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu? Chairman Tucker?
Here. First is the consent agenda items, uh, there is one, uh, item on the consent agenda tonight is, and that is the approval of, uh, regular meeting minutes from the February eleventh, uh, meeting. And during that meeting is when the Durant Airport Authority approved a pavement repair and approved a, a contract for that pavement repair. That was the only thing on last month's meeting. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda item, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, there are no other items on the agenda tonight, there's any new business that should come before the Durant Airport Authority tonight. Hearing none, I'll move for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant Airport Authority meeting, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned. Now, at this time, I will call to order a meeting of the Durant City Utilities Authority, will the clerk please call the roll?
Here. Trustee Shear?
Here.
Trustee Fuller?
Here.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Here.
Chairman Tucker?
Here, there is only one item on tonight's agenda for the Utilities Authority, and that is to approve the regular meeting minutes from February eleventh. And during that meeting, the only thing we did was approve the minutes of the, uh, previous regular meeting. Do, do I hear a motion?
Motion for approved consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items, the clerk will please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, there are no other items on the Utility Authority, uh, agenda for tonight, I would move for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant City Utilities Authority meeting, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu?
Yes.
Chairman Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned. Now we will be back in, in regular session for the Durant, uh, city council. Is there any new business to come before the city council tonight? Hearing none, I would move for adjournment of the city council meeting tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shear?
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu?
Yes.
Mayor Tucker?
Yes, we stand adjourned, thank you very much.